Call the meeting order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Galen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, keeping in mind tonight, the young soldier from the Marine, from Scottsdale who perished over, whether he was doing rescue duty in Nepal, keep in mind that all the other people that have passed away, and just kind of give us a little hit with the old man upstairs if you could tonight, I think we need it, especially tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
This will be the first call of the public for comment on issues within jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may have staff review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, a member of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call of the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. There are speaker request forms in the back, I have one, Ruth Harrison.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. At your last meeting, you recognized Arbor Day and mentioned that the yearly proclamation had been read to those who gathered at the planting of a tree in Heritage Park. I would like to take this opportunity to read some of the statements included in that proclamation for the benefit of those who were not in attendance that day. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And at the bottom, the mayor says, "Further I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations." I have more to say about the town's trees, and about the town's extraordinarily thin tree care ordinance, but I'll save that for another time. Thank you very much.
Does any other member of the audience have anything they'd like to say during this first call to the public? Seeing no movement, I'll call close. Call of the public, Lisa.
Item six, presentations. Presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizing Hospice of the Valley as Business of the Month.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This month's Business of the Month is one of the top nonprofit organization in the valley. Hospice of the Valley is a community-based hospice serving Maricopa and northern Pinal Counties. Some of the ways they care for the people, they honor the veterans by providing special recognition and support to the patients who are veterans. They also have bilingual Hispanic services. Staff and Hispanic community liaison provide direct patient service, and community talks to Hispanic patients and families. Grief support, more than 20 grief support groups valleywide are open to everyone, free of charge. Hospice of the Valley mission statement is comfort dignity as life nears its end. Please join me in honoring Hospice of the Valley Business of the Month of May.
Thank you.
It is my pleasure to accept this award on behalf of all of our staff, our volunteers, and most important, our patients and families. We try very hard to provide the best kind of care that we can, and we believe that we do that. And it's my pleasure to be the representative down here in the Florence area, and I love coming down here. This is the greatest little small town that I am familiar with here in the valley, and I just thank you again from the bottom of all of our hearts.
Thank you, and congratulations again, members.
Thank you.
Item B, presentation of the 2015 Arizona Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Award on behalf of the State Historic Preservation Office to the mayor and council of the town of Florence, on behalf of the Florence Historic District residents and home tour volunteers. Ms. Bonnie Barriola will be presenting this item.
Mr. Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to give a brief summary of the 2015 Historic Preservation Conference held last week in Flagstaff. It was a wonderful conference, except for the weather, which included snow, rain, and cold. We had a record 475 people registered for the conference, which included a tribal consultation and a few speakers who only attended their specific session, but at least 475 people interested in preservation were present. The Florence Preservation Foundation was a monetary sponsor of the conference, which included having a table display to promote Florence. Staff provided some photographs of historic buildings, and I made display photographs of the 13 preservation awards Florence has received over the years. Copies of Florence brochures were also available. I received many compliments on the Florence table. Only two cities or towns had displays, Florence and Mesa. Remaining display tables promoted companies or organizations. The signature event of the annual Historic Preservation Conference is the Preservation Awards Ceremony. This is the primary forum for recognition of excellence in historic preservation efforts in Arizona. These awards recognize people, organizations, and projects that represent outstanding achievements in preserving Arizona's prehistoric and historic resources. Through a very competitive process, the nominations are reviewed, and only those that truly deserve the Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Award are selected as recipients. Although the committee can select up to 10 awards each year, this year only nine of the 19 nominations submitted were selected by the committee to receive the award. The Florence Preservation Foundation attempts submitting a nomination each year to promote Florence throughout the state. Since 2015 was the 30th year for the annual tour of historic Florence, it was decided to submit these 30 years of home tours for an award. This was the first time something of this nature had been submitted for an award. In the past, only people or projects had been submitted. The submittal documents stated, "This annual tour opens homes and buildings to the public that would not otherwise be available for them to tour." It takes over 150 local residents volunteering each year to provide this event to promote historic preservation, not only in Florence, but throughout the state. Although the town has sponsored the tour each year, and staff has helped with it, other organizations have coordinated it over the years. It further stated, "If this nomination is successful, it would be presented to the Florence Mayor, Council, and staff on behalf of the people of Florence who have supported and been involved in the annual tour of historic Florence for the past 30 years." So, at this time, I would like for the mayor and council to come down, so I can present the award to you, and Mark can take a photograph for the newspaper. Do we want to stand there, or over here?
Honor Award, the mayor, council, and staff, on behalf of the citizens of town, every one of the residents of the town, and the awards said, "Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor for 2015, presenting to the annual tour of Florence. This award is presented to the vehicles, organizations, and projects that represent the town's heritage, are making Arizona's history, are important to the world. It is mine, not ours, and it's a government's, and it's Arizona's, standing up the heritage and supporting preservation laws, and choosing experiences to the course of the true health of our citizens." Can somebody declare 30 years ago, 30 years ago, you did not have any time for our first election? About the first one we had, President Morris, and voting stores coming out of the home of residence, he's been having a nice evening, been worried about everything he's had, and well, today, now he's been taking off his pride, and putting this down, how we can be proud, more humble, and part of life, actually, you know, something to do, saying you're fair enough, for our town, and how we can do this. I keep working as much as I want to, as much as I can, thank you. So, I'm not the first one, because, thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
I will go ahead and read the consent agenda while you go back on the stage. Item seven, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of change order number three with Apache Underground Excavation for Bailey Street Waterline for $37,376, with a total project cost not to exceed $648,691.20. Item B, change order number one with Coolidge Engine and Pump LLC for emergency repair of Well 1 for $8,108.14, for a total project cost not to exceed $62,618.73. Item C, approval of change order number one with Ripple Industries for additional troubleshooting and startup services with regards to the installation of supervisory controls of town wells and reservoir sites for $10,375, with a total project not to exceed $80,375. Item D, approval of the resignation of Chairman Tom Selaya from the Arts and Cultural Commission. Item E, resolution number 1520-15, adoption of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the town to enter into a grant agreement with Arizona Criminal Justice Commission National Criminal History Improvement Program. Item F, approval of the April 6th and April 20th Town Council Minutes. Item G, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. Item I, the April 1, 2015 Arts and Cultural Commission Minutes. Item II, September 18, 2014, October 16, 2014, and April 2, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to have F and G.
F and what?
G.
Any other member? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing no movement, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written, removing items F and G.
Second, we have a motion, second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items F and G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tom?
Okay, on the item F, the approval of the town council meetings for April 20th, two corrections need to be made. At the bottom of each page, it shows the date of April 6, 2105.
Oh, I see that, thank you, sir.
And on page 20, we're the call to the public, it's Tracy Adams, I think it was Kathy. Is that not correct? Okay, I get a nod back there.
We will make those changes, sir.
Okay, and on item G, I have a couple concerns there. One, why are these minutes getting to us so late? And, you know, if we can't get these minutes transcribed in-house, I know there's outside services that'll do transcription for us, but I like to read these minutes, you know, prior to even acting on things. The planning and zoning group works very hard for us, I think they need better attention. Also, I had a question on that one item, for the Mosaic Church, says the parking lot will consist of 34 spaces. I went up by the Mosaic Church Sunday and counted 56 cars up there. So, I've got a concern about approving a parking lot with 34 spaces in it.
So, what the town clerk's office will do is we will contact all of the staff liaisons to the boards and commissions, we'll find out who is behind, and what we will do is the town clerk's office staff will take on the responsibility of assisting them with getting their minutes up to date, and making sure that their minutes remain up to date. As far as items that are on the board and commissions, that are underneath their direction and control, I'm not sure what we do after they adopt something that has already been adopted, but we'll seek legal advice from our town attorney.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item F and G.
A second.
We have a motion, second to approve consent items F and G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, unfinished business. Eight A, ordinance number 629-15, discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving a zone change of .55 acres from neighborhood multifamily residential district to highway business commercial zoning district, APN 200-47-0250. First reading was held on May 2015. Mr. Eckhoff will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The only thing that I'll add on this item this evening, since we went over it in detail at the public hearing, is just that we did get a follow-up letter from a citizen in town expressing concern about the loss of the building that formerly housed Happy Adobe. So, I will note that that structure is not actually on the lot that's obtaining the zone change, that structure is already zone B2, and the owner desires to remove that building. The building is not in the historic district, and the building is not on the individual, it's not on the register individually, so there really wouldn't be a mechanism to preserve that building against the desires of the property owners, but I wanted to bring this up to you again. We did kind of talk about that a little bit at the last meeting. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any member, have the council have any questions, and Mark?
No.
Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion that we, excuse me, I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance number 629-15, Taco Bell Zone Change, PZ-11-15-ZC.
A second.
We have a motion, second to adopt ordinance 629-15, I believe that's the one we're talking about. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item nine, new business. Interviews for vacant council seat. Interviews are being conducted in order of the applicant's submittals. Candidates will be asked to wait in the lobby until the time they're called for the interview. Once the interview is completed, applicants may remain in the council chambers for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay, this is the way it's going to be handled. The, I'm going to read a statement before we go into it, for all the candidates, this is a statement for the candidates. "As an applicant for the open seat, before council makes an appointment, any individual who perceives they may have a conflict of interest related to any future town business should contact their own conflict of interest analysis under Arizona law, which may include seeking legal advice prior to accepting the appointment if you are successful." Rules for tonight, the candidates will be put, or taken over and put into the conference room in the clerk's office. After you have your interview, you will be allowed to stay. The council, we have a list of six questions that I'll be asking. At the end of the question, the six questions, I will open up to the council members, if there's any other council member has a question from the comments received, by the answers that you provided to the questions. So, Lisa, do you have somebody that can escort them over and be with the candidates? Okay, so if I could have all the candidates, please? This is due to being fair to each and every one of them, so they don't hear each other's answers and want to change theirs, or whatever. Are all of the candidates here tonight? Okay, would you please call the first candidate, Jeffrey Woolley. You have the option of either standing or sitting, whatever you'd like.
I'd like to sit.
Okay. Jeff, thank you for applying for the position of councilperson for the town of Florence. I do have six questions that each council candidate will be asked, and then, again, if there's any question the council has after reviewing your answers tonight, they will be allowed to do that. Okay? First of all, tell us your name and where you reside at, please.
My name is Jeff Woolley, I live at 373 East Ashley Way here in Florence, Arizona.
Okay, tell us about your motivation and reasons for seeking this appointment.
Well, as most know, I just recently finished about 14 and a half years on planning and zoning, and one of my reasons for actually leaving planning and zoning was to start taking my political career towards the city council or town council, so it was in preparation for that. I've been here for 17 years, I have a passion for Florence. I want to see Florence make the right decisions as they move forward in everything they do, as they used to say, "Grow smartly," if you will.
Okay. This appointment will fill the vacant seat until December 2016. Please tell us what you bring to the table, so we, so to speak, to help us make a better decision on why you'd be a better town councilperson during your tenure.
Well, again, being here for 17 years, I have, I'd like to say, not as good an experience as you do, but I have experience about the town of Florence itself. I'm bringing all my knowledge that I've acquired through the 14-plus years of planning and zoning. I feel that is a great benefit for the council. I'm very actively involved in a lot of the rural area commissions and different things like that that I've done in the past. I'm a graduate of Project Central, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what that is or not, but it's a rural area leadership academy for prospective rural area leaders, and I graduated from them in 2013.
In what? What year?
2013.
2010?
2013, sir.
2013? Okay, thank you. Are there one or two things that you think that Florence government is doing well?
Given what's been thrown at us through the last, I'd say, eight years, I think that we're always heading in the right direction. There's some things that we might have small hiccups on, but I think when the staff and the different commissions and the different councils really put their head together, ultimately, I believe the right decisions are always made in the best interest of Florence.
Okay. Is there any specific one thing that you would hope to accomplish if you are appointed?
As we move forward, making sure that Florence grows smartly, as I always say, and that we always keep in mind that we are still a small town, but unfortunately, we have to grow because it's here, and that we do it in a proper manner.
You may wish to ask each candidate if he or she plans to seek the council seat, they fill in the next election. In other words, are you going to run again if we do appoint you?
That is my full intention.
Does any member of the council have any members to ask questions, Jeff, or Becky? Okay, yeah, I did, thank you. Jeff, what would you, what do you think are the three greatest challenges facing our community today? And do you have suggested solutions to these challenges? If you do, share your suggestions with us.
Well, I think our first challenge is obviously the home rule. I think that our town staff has done an incredible job at what they can do. I sometimes feel that the problem with the home rule is that we need to educate the all of the Florence town a little bit better on what exactly the home rule process is, and why it's so important. Sometimes the people that aren't as involved in the town, or the political side of the town, don't always understand what does home rule deeply mean. So, one of the things I'd like to see is that we, just more education, really getting them to understand that a vote this way could do this, or a vote this way could do this. If we do get it, this is what we plan on doing, you know, if we don't get it, this is what could happen. So, I would say right now, our biggest would probably be home rule.
Okay, does any other member of the council have a question for Jeff?
I just have one. Jeff, if you are not appointed for this seat, will you indeed run for council seat at the next election?
That is my full intention.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Jeff, thank you very much, that's the end of your interview, short, sweet, and to the point. You're more than welcome to stand here, there are other candidates and their responses.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor and council member.
Second candidate, Tom Smith.
Jennifer Evans is bringing Tom Smith up.
Okay, thank you. And I'll try to remember number three, Beck. Tom, you can either sit or stand, whichever one you like.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Tom, we have six questions we're going to ask you. Wait for your response after we hear it. At the end of the six questions, if there's any question from the council members, from comments you made on your, on your questions, they'll be able to ask you, okay? Tell us about your motivation and reasons for seeking this appointment.
Mainly because when this came up, I didn't expect the council member to have to resign. And I thought he was doing a very good job. However, at this point, having been on council for twelve and a half years, I know what's been going on in the past. I know what's been going on now. I don't have to be updated on any of it. And I believe just to be able to step in and take where I left off as a council member, supporting this council, supporting the people of this town, our staff.
Okay. This appointment will fill the vacant seat until December 2016. Please tell us what you bring to the table to help make us a better town council during your tenure.
I believe it's for the love of this town. I want to see it move forward, but I want to see it cared for.
What do you think are the three greatest challenges facing our community? Do you have, do you have suggested solution to these challenges? If so, please share your suggestion with the council.
Number one, I feel, is monetary, depending on what happens on the outcome of the election. But even with that outcome, even if it's in our favor, we still have to be careful. We just have to look at every dime we spend to try to take care of this town. And I believe that can be done with the council in place as it is and any other member of this council. We just have to look at it and take care of it, not just go wild spending money. Second one, as a lot of us care for and know how important the water is to this town. I think that to preserve the water of this town in the future, what we need to do now, keep doing what we have done, and if this water gets polluted or if we run short of water, the town will run short too. We can do it as we've been doing it.
Okay.
Other reasons, I was here when we started this library, went through all that, and I think it's a good project. I want to see it finished and I want to see all of us enjoy it, the rest of the county also. I'm happy to see what's being done in town as far as the new water mains going in, because I happen to know, living on Bailey Street, it wasn't so hot. But it's doing good and if we proceed in that direction, I think we'll keep doing fine. I think I would like to thank two groups, and I can't say I can do anything about it. I can just say that I think they're doing a great job. Because of what's been going on and all this building, the water lines, and what's going to happen in the future, our parks and rec have done a fantastic job and they're going to have a lot more to keep up with. Our planning and zoning department is getting busier, even though it slowed down there for a while, but it's doing very well now and it's going to be very busy in the future. And I wish them the best. Those are the main items that I look at. I look at one other item which I think I can help with, and that is keeping this town council and staff working together, helping each other and getting the job done. Thank you.
There are one or two things, are there one or two things that you think Florence government is doing well?
Yes. I believe taking care of the town is one thing. It's sort of a broad item, but it's something that this council has done very well for a long time, because this council has always been open to listening to anyone, talking to anyone, and tried to help them with all the problems they've had. That is one item that I think this council has been very good at. The other thing I think this council has been good at is working with staff and helping each other out and questioning items that we're not sure of. That's important.
Is there any specific one thing that you would hope to accomplish if you were appointed?
To last eighteen months. But no, honestly, that's what I want to do, is be here for the eighteen months and try to help the council and help the staff and the town of Florence.
If you were appointed in twenty, for the election of 2016, are you planning on running for the council again?
I'm getting old. I think this one, this eighteen months, I can do well. After that, it would have to be, God willing, and the crease don't arise. But at this point, I'm only looking forward to the eighteen months.
Okay. Does any other member of the council have any question, Tom? Tom, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay and hear the other candidates' responses. There's still three to go.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave, okay?
Okay.
Next candidate will be Karen Wall. Karen, you have the option of either standing or sitting, whichever you prefer.
I'll stand.
Okay. But we shouldn't be over three hours with you.
Oh, great.
Karen, the, I do have six questions I'll be asking. At the end of the six questions, if any other council member has a question off of your answers, they're allowed to ask you that, okay?
Okay.
First question is, what motivated you and the reasons for seeking this appointment?
I don't know. I must be crazy. First of all, I really like Florence. And since we moved here, I've participated in a lot of activities and been involved in various concerns and issues, as you well know. And I feel a certain obligation to carry that forward and to do more than what I have done so far. I'd like to be a part of helping to move Florence, Florence forward and continue the vision that the council and the town has put in place, the general plan and all of the various projects and activities that are going on. I have, I feel a sense of responsibility to do that.
Okay. This appointment will fill the vacant seat until December of 2016. Tell us what you bring to the tables to help us make a better town council during your tenure.
Oh, boy. I did take a few notes, just in case. I wasn't sure what you were going to add. People who know me know that I'm very detail oriented, that I try to prepare for anything that I'm involved in. What I think is a good communicator, both in writing and verbally. And I think it's very important to contribute and communicate to the people that I serve. As you know, I have a group that I communicate with on activities in the town and people come to me for information because they know that I'm aware of what's going on in town. I'd like to be able to continue that. Whether or not there's a conflict of interest, I don't know, but I will determine that. I have a Plan B in place, just in case. I've always been a customer service oriented person. If you look at my work history, you'll notice that it's always been in a service-based organization. And I think it's important to bring that to the council as well, because we're, the residents of the town are basically our customers and I see that as an opportunity to serve them. I've worked at all levels of business organizations. I've owned my own business. I've worked for large corporations and I've worked in the educational system, both as a teacher and as an administrator. So, I have some experience with a lot of different types of businesses. I've negotiated large contracts. For example, I negotiated a worldwide contract with AT&amp;T for a communication system for one of the companies that I worked for. I was responsible for a bulk office equipment contract. Those required negotiation skills and research and establishment of bidding criteria. So, I'm familiar with those types of issues that might come to the council. I'm pretty familiar with how the town governance works. I have expressed my opinion at meetings. I've testified before the EPA, the ADEQ, and in the past, I've spoken before large groups of up to 200 people relatively comfortably. I've been on television. I helped with a documentary that AT&amp;T put together and I think that I have the ability to communicate very well with constituents and those in the community. I think that's very important. I believe in teamwork. I've been a part of and have led many teams where consensus building was very important. I would like to be a part of this team. I think you all work very well together and I'd like to be part of that as well. One of the more recent experiences that I had was as the chair of the Sun City Neighborhood Representative Committee, which was formed to allow the various neighborhoods in Sun City to communicate with the HOA Board, which was all developer populated. And we had kind of a 360-degree communication set up and those, those activities led to a lot of positive changes and improvements in our development. I'd like to make sure that that type of communication extends throughout all of Florence, because the more we communicate with each other, the better we'll get along. And I think it's very important to be civil among ourselves. We can't always agree on everything, but we can agree to disagree civilly. And I would certainly present that. I'm not sure what else you're looking for.
I think you've answered just about everything that, I think that pretty well answered the question. Next question, what do you think are the three greatest challenges facing our community today? And do you have any suggested solutions to these challenges? If so, please share your suggestions with the council.
I think probably the most immediate challenge is the passage of Proposition 407. I guess we'll know in a couple of days how that goes and depending on the outcome, that could present a major challenge to the council. Obviously, there are a lot of things to look at if it doesn't pass. And I, I would like to contribute to finding the least painful way to implement whatever budget we're left with if it doesn't pass. Obviously, if it does pass, there is a budget in place that could certainly be worked with to implement. Probably the next challenge will be the opening and, or grand opening, I guess it would be, of the recreation center, the library and the community center area that's under construction. There's probably a lot of detailed work that needs to be handled in that implementation. Certainly, last but not least, I think we're dealing with a major issue as far as the Florence Copper Project is concerned. And I think that is going to play out over however long it takes, but I think that that's a challenge that the council will have to face in time.
Are there anything, one or two things that you think that the Florence government is doing well?
Doing well? Well, I'm very supportive of the council. When I'm not, you usually hear from me. I think that you have a lot of respect in the community. I'm not sure specifically things that you're doing well, other than you're there, you're working hard, you're doing what you think is best for the community. And I'm not sure, in terms of the decisions that you've made, I certainly agree with the majority of them.
If you're appointed, is there one specific thing that you'd like to accomplish while you're appointed?
Improved communication among the various neighborhoods within the boundaries of the town. I have some ideas in terms of social media that could be an avenue for that, as well as some, some print materials that might be developed.
If you're appointed, do you plan to seek the council seat in the next election?
I do not know. Obviously, a lot depends on, on how it goes. You know, I'm sure each and every one of you struggle with that decision every time you have to make it. And I would probably be in the same boat.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any question they'd like to ask of Karen?
No.
Well, Karen, thank you very much. Appreciate your answers. You can stay in the audience and listen to the last two if you'd like.
Thank you.
Next candidate will be Art Buckley. Art, you need to stand or sit, whichever is more comfortable for you.
Well, I have to lean over so far on that one. I'll sit if it's all right.
Sure. Art, I have six questions we'll be asking you. At the end of the six, depending upon your answers, the council may have other questions for you. So, that's the way we're going to run, okay?
Shoot.
What is your motivation and reasons for seeking this appointment?
Well, as I stated when I ran for the office, I had two major concerns. One was the downtown area. One was the downtown area. And the other was the impact fees levied on Florence Gardens and Old Town.
The appointment to fill the vacant seat until December 2016. Please tell us what you bring to the table to help make us a better town council during your tenure.
I have large experience in the development field. The majority of the council does not have that background and experience. And a questioning mind. I will be inquisitive about some statements that are made by the staff or other people as to why they're true or not true.
What do you think are the three greatest challenges facing our community today? And do you have any suggested solutions to these challenges? And if you do, could you share them with us?
Well, one major challenge that the council has consistently addressed and is now coming to a head is the copper mine in the aquifer of... This community gets its water. The time to hold firm is now. Don't... You've about got the race won, don't give up. The position that the town may be in, or whether this vote carries at 409 or not, that is a temporary vote. You only get a year's reprieve. And you're going to have to restore the confidence in the public that you are going to handle their money to the most advantageous way for the majority of the people. And third, I think there's things that can be done to encourage the growth downtown. I think we're at a very critical time period for that. I think if you don't do something pretty dramatic about downtown right away, that that'll get away from you, and you'll be like so many small towns where downtown just withered up and died.
Are there one or two things that you think the Florence government is doing well?
Certainly. They're doing many things well. After all, for years and years and years, they were extremely saving. They've got millions of dollars. They were not profligate in any way. Two, I think that their consistent majority, where they were against the exploitation of the aquifer, especially in light of the administrative law judges ruling about the... Which to clarify the permitting of the copper mine. I think they've done... I think that's very important. I think that's an excellent position that they've taken.
If you're appointed, is there one thing that you'd like to accomplish?
I would like to be part of restoring the confidence of the citizenry as regards This Proposition 409. As I say, this vote is a temporary vote. It's a temporary fix. You've got to convince them that you... Home rule is a thing that they want. After all, every other community in the area carried that by 65 to 75 percent.
Art, if you're appointed, are you planning to seek the same position in the next election?
Absolutely not. Not any way, any kind.
Does any member of the council have any question, Mr. Buckley? Art, thank you very much. You can stay and listen to the last candidate. Ms. Coleman, you can either stand or you can sit at that chair, whichever is more comfortable for you.
Okay, I'll stand.
Ma'am, tell us about your motivation and reason for seeking this appointment.
Well, I have a lot of training in political science. That's my undergraduate degree and my graduate degree. And I'm very interested in politics, and I have been for quite a while. I'm very concerned about the different activities in the community as well. And that was my major motivation to apply for this particular position.
After I read these questions, I forgot to explain to you, I have six questions to ask you. At the end of that, if any council member has any questions from your responses, then they're gonna be able to ask that. Okay?
Bye.
Okay. This appointment will seek... Will fill the vacant seat up until December of 2016. Please tell us what you bring to the table, so to speak, to help make us a better town council during your tenure.
My experience with public policy. I'm from the largest city back east, but I notice things are quite different here. And I believe that I have quite a few ideas, and that could be useful. And I enjoy participating with trying to help the community.
Okay. What do you think are the three greatest challenges facing our community today? Do you have suggested solutions to these challenges? And if so, please share your suggestions with the council. Okay. Are there one or two things... One or two things that you think Florence government is doing well?
Well, I think you're trying to address the problems that exist now in maintaining the historical sites in the city, which are very important, I believe. And also improving the city itself to make it more attractive.
Is there any specific one thing that you would hope to accomplish if you were appointed?
Yes, I would hope to have public utilities public.
I guess now is the last question, is if you're appointed, do you plan to seek the council's seat during the next election?
At this juncture, I would... It would be premature for me to say.
Is there any other... Member of the council have any questions?
No.
Bill?
You said you wanted to make public facilities public.
Public utilities.
Oh, utilities, okay.
Yes, the water supply.
I was curious, I was like, are we missing some of our facilities? Okay. Utilities, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My hearing isn't perfect, so... Thank you.
I would ask you, what are you talking about on that?
The water.
Water?
Yes, the water is maintained by a private individual. And I really don't think that that is appropriate. We have no say-so as citizenship on what goes on there, as far as rate increases or the way things are maintained. We have no control over that at all. It's completely private.
Thank you. Any other questions? And how do you say your first name? Delane?
Delane, yes.
Delane, thank you very much for your responses and your application.
Thank you, it was my pleasure.
We will be making an appointment on the first meeting in June. I believe that is June 1st. Is that correct? And again, all the candidates, thank you very much for being here tonight, answering our questions. Now the politicking comes. You have to have a majority of votes amongst the six of us, so that's... Your job is now ahead of you. You got through the easy part. Okay. Management report. You have one? Oh, is it in the... There is one in the packet?
Yes, Mayor, Council, there is one in the...
You're used to not seeing one, so I'd kinda skip over that. Does any member of the council have any questions? Hearing none, we'll go on to the call of the public. Second call of the public for public comment on issues pertaining here. The first... What I told you, the first one still holds true. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, our close call of the public. Call of the council. John?
Yes, I'd like to thank Public Works for the work they got accomplished just last week on Hunt and Addaway, the intersection, strapping the roads and guardrail and all that. Good job. Thank you.
Becky? You wanna turn your mics on?
Yes. Sorry. I'd like to make everyone aware that I was very honored this morning to attend a event at the Mary C. O'Brien School that basically was an exercise for the students out there. And Lisa Garcia, our town clerk and deputy town manager, did an outstanding job of helping these children understand presentation of a project. And the project actually was building a schematic and engineering design for a town of Florence library. And it was an exercise for fourth graders. I was amazed at the kind of results that these children produced. It was very outstanding and made me think of my own grandchildren that are currently in the first grade and what they have to look forward to. It's just amazing, the kind of education that's being put out for these children. So I would like to make everyone aware that the mayor and I attended, and I think Valerie, you had something to do with it at the onset, but Lisa did an outstanding job.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Valerie?
Just to piggyback on what Becky is saying, I did attend the first session with Lisa, or one of her sessions. And I would just like for everybody to know that Lisa makes Florence proud. She represents our town so well, and she is always promoting Florence. So I appreciate the work that she does, and those children were very interesting. They asked some good questions. And some of those questions I had to think about for a minute. But it was very interesting and exciting to watch Lisa at work with those kids. She does a great job. And she does Florence proud. Good job, Lisa.
Thank you, Valerie. Tara?
I do. I just want to send everybody a reminder that tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, all ballots are due down to county. If you did not mail them at this time, please hand-deliver them. Again, they will be open tomorrow until 7:00 PM, and they're right over on Florence Avenue. I'd like to thank the candidates that came forward and applied and interviewed this evening. You all did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. And that's all.
Okay, I'll close it out in saying that I wish that we'd have had that program out at Mary C. O'Brien.
Did you skip John?
John?
I just wanted to ask the town clerk to remind us what the election results are gonna be and posting and all that.
You can tune into the town website at 8:05, and we should have results posted between 8:05 and 8:15 tomorrow evening.
Thank you.
If you haven't voted, go vote again. That program that we attended this morning out at Central Arizona Collie... Or Mary C. O'Brien School, I wish would have been in effect prior to doing the architect work for our new library. Would have saved a lot of money with those kids and the project they came from. Very interesting, the educational situation in the United States today and how these kids need to... You know, it used to be the three Rs, back when Denny went to school. Read and write arithmetic. But anymore, it's computers, computers and computers. And again, please, if you haven't put your ballots in the mail, or it's too late to put them in the mail now. You need to bring them into the county recorder's office here on...
Florence Ave.
On Florence Street to drop them off. If you have any questions, you need to know where that's at, come in. Lisa will be able to help you on it. And do the candidates apply to the job for council? After you have your heads examined as to the reason you did it, and we make the decision, it will be a decision that's... We will base it on what's best for the town of Florence. Nothing personal at all with any of them. It's on what we believe is the sitting council and not as the mayor will be for the good of the town of Florence. And that's the way we look at it. Need a motion?
Me.
We have a motion second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you and good evening.